Loud. I see me. There we are. There I see you. I see Ben. How long did we wait before we could come home?
Yeah.
10, 15 minutes or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we get a lot done. We get a lot done. This is not a forum though. No.
With the new members.
Yeah.
Four. Yeah, you got six right now, right?
I know we don't have Paul. No, he's kind of like on vacation. He takes the vacation seriously.
Just connect.
Right, yeah, he does.
Yeah. Last was usually late.
I remember the last time it wasn't working. You know, so and so's on, so and so's on. It doesn't look like anybody else is on.
There's nobody, yeah.
It is today, right?
You got the knowledge, right?
I put it in my calendar. My calendar says, "I gotta be here for him there."
Find it. I think you're spreading the flags out. Go for you.
Oh, we're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got any in your car that can go in ours?
I got the old ones. I've got the clipboard with my notes on.
Oh, God.
That's good.
Things I saw, saw a few.
Well down?
We need a couple that are broken in half and someone stood it up right behind it.
Oh, yeah, those would be glued.
Yeah.
If it was in a lean, we can put some stuff behind it. I'm just breaking it out. They are easy. They're easy.
Couple of them had like their gates aren't latching. They just have to swing over. Things like that.
They were responsible for the condition of the... No, I've had to break up the stones.
The one that I have a lot of notes on is Gallico. In terms of a lot of people. Don't clash what I had.
Oh.
A lot of new names.
Oh.
And the markers actually say, "Two veteran or Operation during Freedom." It was a more recent death.
Right.
So I wrote their names down to kind of figure out who they are.
Yes.
But they did a lot. They made a note. People that own it or whatever, they went through and cleaned the markers. They're like this color. Almost white. Look great. Now you can read the names a lot easier. I was just wondering.
The Union Cemetery did that. They have professionals come in.
And maybe they did too. It looks great.
Yeah.
But I remember seeing on, it was someplace in Texas. They were, it was great intentions. They wanted to clean them. They were using some, whatever they used had a slight amount of acid in it. They paralyze it. So they cleaned them all. It looked great. Back like a week later, they were just flat. Like all the inscriptions were just gone. Just deteriorated.
Isn't that short enough?
Yeah, the acid just faded away. I don't know what kind of rock it was. I just don't have it.
What kind of condition or the cemeteries had that you put flats?
They were all pretty good. I think the worst one was one on Fanning Road, by Fanning Road, to the...
One on Shuville.
Yeah, Shuville, Fanning, right there. The pathway was kind of...
Oh, yeah. It sits kind of a little bit. That's the one the Rotary has, I think.
The Williams?
That's the one.
Could be. I have that one on my list.
Yeah, but they'll... They'll, I don't know when, what the schedule is, but they'll be in there.
They'll be.
Don't worry.
The iron rods for the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Couple of the outside was, you know, it's just slightly out. So the rod just sits on the tip.
Okay.
So.
Yeah. Why don't we, we replaced.
We did replace them.
Right, just a treated, that's how. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few big trees in that certain tree.
But it's hard to... It was hard to get up. You make them too long, you can't get them in.
Yep.
You know, and then in a little bit and then so you, that, like you say, just a little bit that holds it up.
And then like I said, it's just leaning the wrong way. If it leaned this way, it'd be okay. But if it leaned outward, so it goes rather just hanging on. I don't know. I mean, I guess either way, the front edge, forward, still in the backside, kind of like we do with the waders.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Could do something like that.
That would be the way to do it. But Rotary does. Well, it was the big tree that took those rods down.
Me?
Came in and took, like that thing was.
Oh, yeah. That was just the bridge too. Not even the gold tree.
And, yeah, we were lucky because it didn't take down any stone, which is kind of a miracle.
Yeah, it didn't hit the fence, but not the...
We have been there. Nobody. Several, several cemeteries. Oh, seven hurricanes and big storms and Ben and I go driving around, you know, seeing what... We've been like damn lucky. If something came down, it seemed to come down right down between, you know, it was, we've been lucky.
Say it's gonna be a quick meet. Very quick.
Anyone say not, that they were not gonna be?
No. When's your next meeting?
October. I talked to Martha this morning. She called to tell me all the things she's gonna talk about today. No, I don't know.
She was planning on coming.
Yeah.
Paul's pretty good too.
Paul's not coming.
He's on vacation.
Paul's not coming.
Yeah, I know. He's away.
I remember telling him the last time. I'm not gonna be here for that one.
No, if he's here.
Oh, yeah.
But the thing, the thing, I was hoping we could, oh, somebody's coming. Let's see, he's one of us.
Oh, my apologies, everybody. Am I the poor?
Yes, you are. We were, we were about ready.
There's an event going on at my house on Tuesday afternoons that starts around three. It's difficult for me to extract myself for this bar and book reading.
You'll have to change the date of that event that goes on in your...
No, I'm not in charge of that.
You know, it's hard, it's hard to find, no matter what time you set. You know, somebody's, you're gonna have an event.
I don't, whatever you just said, I don't have a... I'm just apologizing. I have no access.
Well, we're very active and seeing if he doesn't.
You can now have a meeting.
Ready to say we can't have a meeting.
I live in a hurry. I have my glasses.
And no one's... We'll got this going, but nobody's calling, so.
There's just two girls.
All right, we're out. We haven't done anything yet. I'm just calling us to order right now. Okay. Called to order. We have to take attendance, right?
Yeah, four present.
Four present. We are missing two ladies and a man. Paul, Paul's, he's on vacation. Yeah, he told me, told us last time he was here.
Yeah, he's pretty bad.
Pretty, pretty bad.
Appointment of an alternate, alternate, I know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, right. She's not, she's talking about for this meeting. We're not worried about that.
Yeah, the other.
Yes.
I don't think that original itself.
It will. I'll make this thing when the time comes, but my...
Similar.
All right, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah, a new member that I want to bring in. Their excuse was, well, their excuse, their excuse was, they tried to equalize the number of them.
Yeah. Yes.
But look, they've been kind of lax with that because not this.
The people are making an issue about that earlier.
I don't, if you're to volunteer, somebody who wants to participate, come on.
Yeah.
If they wouldn't, apparently somebody.
There are some kids, some committees, I think that that is necessary. It's work?
Yeah.
No.
Apparently somebody complained. So they would not let the new member, who I thought would be good. He's in a general.
You have to, you have to continue to work on that. The things we're supposedly working on and not which party we could correct.
Yeah.
Next.
Okay, next. A review of approvals, the minutes, the last minutes that we had. I don't know if anybody's looked at it.
I didn't, but I'll...
No, I've never seen them.
Never seen one before.
You're supposed to be in charge of them.
Are you the one that's spelling my name wrong? S H E I L F. No, no, it says S H E L I F.
She knows.
Well, some of it, you got them right. Right. See, it says up here on your chairman in the book.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Under roll call. Sexton, he was present. John Proctor was present. He's the sexton for the Avery Stoddard Cemetery.
Why note that he is? Want to note that he is the...
They want to, yeah, they... Yeah, on his, it says here, John Proctor was present. He needs the sexton for the Avery Stoddard Cemetery. Shows up again. New business, number four. Any group business to come before the committee? Okay, Avery Stoddard Cemetery sexton should be John Proctor. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I have to sit down and have a lot to talk. Yeah, we're, we're at it. Red, metal.
I have two.
That was a $10 purchase. It is now, guess what?
Fifty.
No, twenty.
I have two. I kept one at home.
But...
And this is an extra.
Okay, so we approve of these minutes now. All in favor?
I move in the first of minutes.
I second it. You want to second it? I've learned this after a while. I've only been doing it for 45 years.
Approve or change this?
Jessica, right?
Yes.
Don't feel bad, Jessica. I just got here too many times.
Where are we in the minutes? Official fiscal report, $2,000 is in our budget. For this new year, this new year. I was thinking with January, but they don't. Our committees now, flags. We used seventy, 707 flags. Left?
I have two.
I don't know. I don't know.
I was just wondering if we order more.
Oh, we, every year we order. We order from January, February.
You get, you get a fair number.
Yeah.
Not enough to do.
Another go around.
Gonna have to order.
But like, do you need anymore? Do you need anymore? I don't need anymore, so.
So this year, this year, we're, we're all set for last year. We'll just go on with next year and start anew.
I think that we have a good count this year, especially on the big cemetery.
Yeah. I have to apologize for not showing up for cemetery day on those two Saturdays.
We got a whole bunch of voice.
Thank God, because I went to the garden club.
Thanks for showing up.
I contacted my friend who's like the Boy Scout troop leader and I was like, hmm, I'm not gonna be able to be there. We had to go to DC.
Oh.
So who, did Mr. Proctor bring the Boy Scouts? Who brought the Boy Scouts?
Mr. Proctor brought the Boy Scouts.
Oh, God, was wrong.
It was kind of chaotic, I thought.
It's an important lesson for them though.
Yes, it is. It is.
I, I think that the thing was they had enough adults.
Yes, that is.
Leaders.
Mentors, people to do...
That's the key.
That is the key, yeah.
Okay, under committees is adopters, Mr. Bernardino?
No, we still, we still have the two cemeteries without adopters.
And they, they are what?
The Stoddard, the one in Stoddard's Park. Is one, which is a fairly, fairly small one.
On Route 12?
On Route 12. Stoddard's Park, it's a little, little high up the hill.
Yeah.
So that, that one still needs, needs, hopefully you can find.
What does it involve? Like, so what does adopting the cemetery involve? I've had that question asked.
It's, it's, and this, this one is typical. There's a lot of shade, the trees all around. So you don't get sunlight where stuff really takes off, you know? So it's a matter of coming in there two or three times a year. Probably about now and then later in the summer to just weed whack a space. And pick up branches, you know, any branches that are there.
And then report tree issues. If there's like falling trees, fallen trees, branches that are 40 feet long in this side.
Yeah. So that, that one is pretty, you know, there's not a whole lot. I mean, a person could go there and probably in a, an hour or something, they haven't done. The other one that we have is a big, that's, that's the yellow. Yellow, what is it? Yellow.
The main.
The main.
Main.
Yeah, it's up behind the firehouse.
Yeah, that's mine.
Station.
Okay.
You've been up for that. And that's, that's big. I mean, it's got, it's got quite a bit of area.
It's, it's good.
Yeah, for the few stones that are in it, it's...
Yeah.
It's, it's in the sun.
I mean, it's bigger than this.
The tribe took care of that.
Yes.
For...
Till they went for it. That was the BS I got.
They put the paved driveway.
They made a nice driveway.
Which is very nice.
They did, they did. Yeah, they said that all looked nice.
You know, you can't, you can't be too critical of them, but they...
Couldn't take care of it anywhere.
Yeah, but they, they gave up. They said they...
The firehouse for the guy.
You go to the casino, like the way the, all those chillin' museums, you go in and you go past the firehouse, past the parking lot for the firehouse and there's this little road and you drive up and there's a little parking lot. It's all very nice.
Steps.
Very well taken care of. I have a report on that.
It's, they cut down all of huge pine trees, which has a plus and minus thing. You know, I guess it looks better. Well, some of them were, the root system, the trees were uprooting some of the stones. And there are a few stones that are kind of in bad shape, but...
This is what I had from Erica and my visit there two months ago, okay? It, it says, her, she wrote this, generally poor condition, many broken stones, some can be raised. Stonewall next to entrance from the parking lot, vandalism, right of way, well maintained. That people tearing down the stones from the wall and the steps from the, that the native, that the tribe made from the parking lot up into the cemetery. Okay, that people have been, I don't know, taking stones off. I don't know what they're doing. It has tall clumps of grass.
Worth money.
Throughout.
Unfortunately.
Three small trees, says needs attention. Poison ivy on the gravestone of Hannah May.
It's, yeah, yeah, because we, we went in there and the guys were weed whacking. And I, all of a sudden, I realized, and they just sprayed poison ivy all over the place. They, I said, shut them every day, you know, they said, let's go home.
You know, lacking an adopter, adopter. I, I think we ought to think about putting a work party together or maybe you have some, some, some help. That could do that. But, I mean, if you get three or four of us there.
Yeah.
You know, with weed whackers and so forth. You know, in a...
So we can put that on a list to...
So that's, that's something, I think.
What's the one in Stoddard Park? Which one is this? Is it the Robert Stoddard or?
No, it's not the Robert. Wait a minute.
The Robert.
Is it the Hibbert Stoddard? And?
That's the Hibbert. Hibbert Stoddard in Stoddard's Park.
Say that name again?
Hibbert Stoddard.
So I had the Robert Stoddard and that's in really bad shape too.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
So you, I had three, three of mine were in really bad shape.
Whoa.
Oh, Hibbert Stoddard, Stoddard Hill, one.
The other is because we supposedly we have an doctor.
Yeah.
I forgot my map. Because I can't, so the one that's on Iron Street. You have to go up somebody's driveway. All of the funeral markers, I mean, all of the veterans' markers have bullet holes in them.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Yeah. And all of the veterans' markers have bullet holes in them.
Wonderful.
Twenty dollars a car. Yeah. Oh, no. And that's a Revolutionary War cemetery. They're all Revolutionary War.
Jessica, could you say it again? I was looking up.
Hibbert Stoddard?
No.
I think you talked about the...
It's on Iron.
Fanning.
Well, I had Allen Saturdayly, Edward Avery, Holdridge Newton and Robert Stoddard. And I know it wasn't the Newton one.
Newton is...
Newton's was in good shape.
Very good shape.
Yeah.
Very good shape.
It's like a park. Yeah.
And the gentleman who takes care of them will let us his name.
I mean, I can run out to my car and grab my map.
Okay, so it's not Saturdayly. It's not Allen Saturdayly. What, yeah, sure. And I have them, I think I have the map here if you want.
Is it on Fanning Row? No.
It was in, it was on Iron Street.
I think there's a map in the front that you can open, open out. Just turn a couple of pages.
Yeah, yeah.
Number 21.
So on this map, it says number 21?
Seen bullet holes in some of the signs. Some of the signs. I've never...
I've never seen one of them.
Ezekiel Red. Is 21. Starting at congregation 117, one tenth of a mile to 214, turn right on 214, 2.2 miles to Shuville Road.
Shuville Road.
Turn left on Shuville Runway.
Twenty-two.
We have Ezekiel Gray. Oh, 22.
One more.
Holdridge.
Oh, I went there.
I had 22.
Oh, the whole, okay.
This is, that is, that is the Holdridge one. It's in somebody's driveway.
One driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. And my grandson cut it down all last summer and we were there two months ago and it was not in bad shape, except there's a tree over the stone wall somewhere and the east wall.
It was all, when we went and get the flags, it was all overgrown and all of the markers had bullet holes in them.
That was the one with the bullet hole.
Yeah, that's on that, that's Indian, that's Indian territory.
Because, because Erica and I were there and when did we get the stuff? April 8th?
Somewhere around.
The next week, we went.
When it was Allen Steerly.
I'm terrible. I'm sorry.
Actually, Dave, Dave Walter.
That's the whole, the whole big cemetery date, the whole region family sometime mid, during summer. Well, Ben and I will run into him and remind him.
I mean, both of these have adopters.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'll contact them. And make sure that they're still.
I'm looking along. 214.
It was on Saturday. I had all of the...
Oh, that's number one in this book. Allen Saturdayly. Sandy Hollow Road, turn right on Sandy Hollow. One, this, that's, this is at Nelson.
That one was really well taken care of.
Yes.
Allen Saturdayly was very well taken care of. Newton was really well taken care of.
That's chapter one of the Town of Brockton Utility State.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got, remember, is...
Whalehead.
Whalehead. It's just very near Route 12.
Right, right, right.
That one. And the Town of Brockton is on Sandy Hollow Road on our side of the reservoir. And I told you, I happen to go by and they had hired some company and we were in there. There were four men in big trucks and they were spitting polish the whole place.
Yeah.
And then the VFW does broach and they're spitting polish too.
They do a good job.
Yeah.
Every now and then you run into one. Every now and then you run into one that looks like a park.
Did you come up with another name?
I don't know.
Let me see what, twenty-seven.
Yeah. They, really. That's unscheduled. Believe it or not. Reporting of cemetery problems. Old business. Yeah.
I think we're doing new business, because we're reporting that.
Yeah, well.
Twenty-seven. And they, here's twenty-seven, this Hale, two fourteen, one point three miles to cemetery on your right, south side of.
Okay, remember it. That, that is a twenty-year-old book.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunate.
Jessica, are we talking about a small cemetery?
No, it had, I feel, no, I had, um, I had Alan Saturday, Edward Avery, Holdridge Newton, and Robert Stoddard.
Alright, so we covered Saturday, we covered Newton. Edward Avery is page eleven in this book.
That's a bitter sweet.
Have some bitter sweet.
I don't know.
Either that one, or, or either the Edward Avery, or the.
Edward Avery, we lost shade, bitter sweet.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to remember, because my husband's got all the. If it's, which one it is. But the Robert Stoddard was in the bad shape. There was no turning, weed whacking, it was completely overgrown.
Which one now?
A lot of.
Robert Stoddard.
Robert Stoddard.
Robert Stoddard, yeah.
That tends, uh, one of its workers is taking care of that.
Yeah, that.
That was Memorial, that was Memorial Weekend, we went up there. Lot of broken headstones.
Yeah. I've seen it in the past, it was like a little campsite next to that, that was a fire pit. Yeah. Few tessels.
Oh, Rob. This, that, Rob started the one on Route twelve.
What?
The one on Route twelve.
Robert.
Yeah, yeah. And this way the, the boat launch is, and that has been a place that attracts.
Yeah.
People historically.
They, they, they live there.
Oh, they do other things there.
Yeah.
It's a great.
Yeah, that's the, uh, the one in the park.
You know.
That's the cemetery in the park.
Well, you drive in, there's a boat launch down the.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's the one.
You go.
That's the one with the bad reputation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or variety of activities, we'll report. Alright, so. Didn't we figure out, Jessica, which one it was yet?
Do you have any comments on the name of yours?
Uh, let's see, like I mentioned, Gallup Hill is part of the biggest one. That one was just a lot of the markers, uh, new names, names not matching.
What's the?
The Gallup Hill, the big one, Gallup Hill.
Yeah, um, that's, that's Mayers. Right?
No, 'cause I do the names. Gallup Hill. To travel two point five miles on Gallup Hill Road Cemetery will be on your right time. It's called Hale, number ten, and Gallup, number twenty.
Gallup.
That's the Gallup Homestead, yeah.
Yes.
You have to go over a fence.
Go over the fence and then go all the way up there.
And then there's a long, uh, entryway.
And that's, they're not going to have the tombstones in that one?
No, 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 they're, they, those ones where they clean them, they, they look this color.
Oh, okay, yes.
They, yeah.
I'll bet you they had that.
They have it as well.
Last time I was there, previous, there was actually guys working, and I talked to them, I was like, hey, you know, I noticed a couple, he's like, oh, yeah, we're, we're making note which ones, we're getting the, uh, the bond and everything. Next time I went back, they were back up.
Do you guys know who Gallup is, in the Gallup family? Not believing that. You know the Gallup poll? Does reported statistics leads with, uh, uh, political poison, okay?
That's it.
Oh, okay.
And for you, I think he's.
He's also, they were also very military.
Yeah, very military.
Very military.
And he would come every year, uh, um, Memorial, no, at, uh, Labor Day weekend and preach at the Congregational Church in Ledig Center, every year for years and years. I haven't heard of that recently.
Maybe he, he also, um, that one went south.
This year they're having their big family get together at the Nathan Lester House.
Yes, I heard about that, too, from someone else.
To the walk.
This is a very strong family, like the women, the people.
Okay, yeah, and, okay, I know who, who maintains that.
The, all of the, uh, markers, the veterans' markers, they'll have bullet holes.
It's right, it's so close to houses, it's unbelievable.
I mean, it's right behind it, yeah.
Yeah. I wonder if this is, Pearson knows anything about it.
Okay. Let's see if Pearson's.
That cemetery needed a little.
The one on Buddhist Road.
Yeah.
Here's another one. And they're not the one, they're like older ones, too.
Yeah, the, the antique ones, you hate to see a.
Yeah.
Bullet holes in there.
Do you, do you?
I would just, I would definitely my next question.
There's not much that they can do at this point.
No. I think they should know.
But, yeah, it might be something to tell them about.
Yeah, that's what I mean, not to ask them to do something, but to say, keep them.
It might be something to ask the person that lives right next to the cemetery, we have to go up their driveway to get to the cemetery.
Yeah.
But someone has asked that question, it's something, kids and men also, you don't know. We don't know who those people are. Do you know Hale?
I know who maintains it, in quotes, um, because she did, and she did a great job.
But would she have?
No, she doesn't.
Is she the one who lives right there?
She, the, the, the one, the one here, you do the driveway, and then it's like, and then it's her time.
I, I, I think I remember her a few years ago, uh, saying there was a certain plant that she thought was protective or environmental, didn't want to mess with it.
Endangered species.
These small things in the, in the center.
Well, now we got endangered species.
I can't remember what, what they were, but that she had.
Now, I, now, just, you know who did it? The lady in, um.
Do you need to show it? I don't remember this community, or did we just say the community? Right to the police, so she would say, Jessica, a member of this community's reported bullet holes in grave zones. Let's get the right words for what Jessica actually reported. Could you just say it again?
There, in each of the, uh, veterans' markers, they're both.
And that, that is so.
You're talking gravestones?
No, the, the veterans' markers.
Oh, we call them the medallions, the veterans' medallions. Bullet holes. In the.
Antique.
Yeah, and then the antique ones.
Okay, oh, oh.
Antique.
Antique, um, Revolutionary War or?
Yeah, some of them were.
They're, they're really neat holders.
Yeah, I can look them up in the.
The other one, Jessica.
Yeah.
I concur.
Yeah. I believe you.
Now.
Okay, you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
This, so, do we make a motion that the committee send a report to? How do we handle this?
How do we do that? Or, 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 or do we just call?
No.
We're gonna have to mail something.
Yes, gonna have to.
I think, yeah, because you can't talk to them. You ever tried to get into the, the, uh?
Oh, yeah, I talked to them last week, I told them I lost my pocketbook and it hunted all over town, boy, it was hanging in my closet.
So maybe you should.
You're gonna, no, you, you'll give us a bad name.
Did you at least call them back and tell them found it?
Actually, I called them back and told them that the next day I placed a deposit at the cold.
Oh.
And then if you've ever been in there, they have a, you go in the front, you talk on the phone.
Yeah.
And there's a little office on the side. And so the officer who interviewed me also had an intern with him who was doing summer study. He's a, a college student, not forensic science, criminal justice major doing an internship. And I sat in there for twenty minutes or however long it took. And I had tested negative that morning, but I was having a lot of allergy symptoms, and so I'm saying, alright.
Yeah, you can't tell the difference.
It's my allergies, but the next morning it was not my allergies.
And you can't tell the difference most of the time.
Some work in hard for this community, Jessica. But use Jessica's name in this one. Jessica, I don't know your last name.
Staley.
Staley?
Staley.
Stanley?
Staley.
Staley, D A I L U Y?
S T A L U Y.
Staley.
Yep.
Little fluid in the ear, don't worry, it's a ghost. Alright, I move that the, um, chair send a letter to the, um, chief of ledig police informing him of the findings of Jessica Staley, committee member who, um, placed the flags and examined the condition of the Edward Avery Cemetery. Number six.
They don't know where they are.
Yeah, that's why I'm telling you, number six, page fourteen in the book, so you can copy these directions, okay?
So.
Can you put number six, number four, page?
Second, Will.
Page eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, are we done with Edward Avery?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. It's something to do for.
Well, I've been reporting on cemeteries now. Jessica, do you have others you want to report about?
Nope, I said the ones that weren't taken care of, and that one just said.
Okay. Now, um, Will, do you have cemeteries to report?
Yeah, the Gallup Hill was the one I mentioned, they actually cleaned all the, um, the markers, looks great. They do a good job.
Oh, okay, but no problem.
Well, the only problem was the marker, not the markers, the, the amount of, uh, veterans on the list didn't match who was there. So I wrote down additional names, so I can investigate some, you know, how many more flag.
Right.
They actually have, uh, a, a newer, newer, not, not Revolutionary, not Civil War, but, uh, Operation During Freedom veteran, so.
That's it, yeah. I don't think I've ever seen one of them.
But, yeah, young, you know, I mean, there were a couple of young kids mixed in, too. It, it's, it's heart wrenching to see.
It is.
When you see the, the birth dates, they're just too close together.
Yeah.
Yeah, birthday and. The other one was, one Fanning Road. Shuville Fanning.
That's the name of that one.
Shuville Fanning, I'll be.
Here, show me one.
Over here.
Wait, no.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, one-five. And then in this book, that's number twenty-five, right here. Twenty-five, Leifam Howell.
Yeah. That is a part of that.
Yeah, that one, they are. Way against my, my road up there, just over Rome.
I, when I've been on it, you know, it's been, it's a only like that, usually.
Yeah.
But I park on the side and win this one, yeah.
But I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's there.
Yeah.
Rome, branches, uh, the buckle rails, being just on the cusp of.
Falling down.
So.
Yeah, it has metal, it has metal rails and cement, uh, cement pillars, one of the outside pillars.
It's got a cemetery inside the cemetery, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of leaning out so that the rod is just hanging on there, so.
I wonder how we can, that's maintained by, um.
Straighten out or push, push, push over.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'd be, dig on the front side, push forward, and put it back, put it on the backside.
But that's a, that's adopted.
Yeah, it's a rotary, and they, you know, I, I'm sure they will, they will get to it, you know?
My, my Edward Avery Staley.
They usually go in there.
It's not something that happened overnight, that's just.
It's aged, it's aged.
Okay, my cemeteries?
Okay.
Okay, um, the Avery Cemetery on Oak Hill Road?
Yes.
Okay. And we talked about this one before, it's the one we talked about whether we could use Roundup on poison ivy.
Yeah.
Which we did, and we did go to lodges and get the yellow sign and post it, and it's still up there for them and them back together. But the cemetery itself is, oh, is, the whole area is being overgrown with history, barberry, and wild herbs, the whole, whole place, including around the graves, which has, says two-inch circle around four graves. Oh, that's what we rounded, because they have poison ivy.
Yeah.
Okay. Plus all those.
You actually sprayed wrong there.
Yes, we did. Okay, and then.
That's the Christopher, right?
Christopher, yeah.
Now, that's another one that's been adopted, and I guess they.
He's supposed to live there on Oak.
Yeah.
Tree, but I don't know his name. You know his name?
Jason, I think this is.
Last name?
He lives right on the oak tree, the end of Oak, Oak Trail. So he's close by. I'll have to contact him to see if he's still.
Well, we talked about this last year.
I saw it earlier in the year, it didn't look like anything had been done the previous year.
Maybe he moved out.
The stuff was at least a year growth, so.
That was last year.
Yeah, that was last, that was last.
It's worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's worse. It just gets worse.
Except for a two-inch, two-foot circle around four veterans' graves.
So I'll add it to contact.
Other cemeteries, Morgan Billings also very well taken care of. That is Fred Allen's on a.
Right.
Not on their property yet, but behind the, the Apple.
Right.
Okay, and, um, the people are still working near it, there's gravestones that they have pieced together with something that looks like Gorilla Blue. I don't know if that's the right thing, but that's what it looks like. Um, this poison ivy's starting to show at the, at the headstones. And we did not spray up there. Repaired stones being returned upright positions, the right of ways we had to follow across the street from the Baptist Church. That's a very easy path. It's probably shorter to go through Allen's old porch, but we have.
It is, but.
We like the.
Yeah, we don't want to direct the public to go through.
Erica and I like the.
But, but for us workers, I mean, he's, he's perfectly amenable to us driving in there and doing whatever.
You never know. You never know what limestone's in the pastures that we.
Tell you that.
I don't know these.
For a while there, there was, um, a bull. Are you better than?
Morgan Billings Cemetery, which is kind of behind the high school and it's behind Allen, do you know Allen's Apple Barn?
Yes.
Okay, so you know that place, it's behind that.
But you never know what you're gonna find in your backyard.
On Gallup Hill Road.
Yeah.
To the Baptist church.
Yeah.
And we actually now park at the Baptist church.
Right.
Cause it's safer than pulling in.
Is that path in good condition?
Very good condition, yes.
Somebody's maintaining that.
Well, people are.
But that path, yeah, that, that path goes all the way down and around, it heads out on, uh,
At the.
Lamb Town, that far, so.
Right.
It doesn't.
Does it go far?
It used to.
Used to.
I have walked the front Lamb Town all the way to the Baptist church, but now some trees came down in the middle of it. And the path ends up at, um, I wanna say Applewood Farms, the horse.
Oh, yeah.
Down the road.
Yeah.
But that's where the path ends. And if you go from Lamb Town, it ends just before the horse farm where these trees are down. And that's like a town, right of way, Pike, Pike, something over the trail.
Oh.
But they, they have never opened it up and I suspect Applewood Farms doesn't want those too. I don't really know. That, that's just my suspicion.
This happens.
Okay.
Mayor and his son have done a really good, good job here.
Uh, at, at the Morgan's Building Cemetery. Yep, they come back and there's still stuff marked with orange markers that, you know, that's the next thing they've been to work on. And there's a couple of old, what are the white stones that, like, maybe they're limestone or. Okay, and they, they have fallen down like this and they are in pieces, lying face down. And one of them is a veteran's grave. And, I mean, I, I would leave it to the people who are doing that work.
Right.
You know.
Is this the Morgan Billings?
Morgan Billings, yeah.
We just erected all of the stone.
But there's two lying down, face down and then.
I, I mean, there's a lot of names.
Oh, these have been lying down.
They've been laying down for a while. Remember, we tried to figure out how to make some kind of a, a thing in, in the dirt, oh, that we could take all the stones and put them together like a jigsaw puzzle.
Yeah.
Uh, that, it didn't work because the first time it rained. The whole thing was gone.
We took the trust money for that cemetery. And we paid ten here to come in, be re-glued back together, all that could be.
Right.
Some of, some of them are twenty hundred pieces on the ground.
Not twenty hundred.
And he also.
But those are the ones you cannot. Cannot.
I thought he reset everyone that was down on the ground.
No.
He said there's two there.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have a, I don't think I have a picture of them. I'll look and see if I have a picture for you. I'll get you a picture, but that's. They're beside.
Yes.
Inside here.
I remember they've fallen down over this way, out of the line.
You're saying they were down.
Yeah, and they've been down on the ground for years.
Yes, they have been. This is nothing new.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll take.
I don't know how we just.
I can go for a walk.
I don't know how.
Alright, we also went to Main Town, which you talked about generally poor condition, many broken stone, stone wall next to entrance parking lots as vandalism. Right of way maintained by a reservation, tall clumps of grass, small trees throughout that, that are, that are going to grow.
Will grow up.
Yes, and poison ivy on the gravestone of Hannah May, and then Fanning. This is, um, which one is, uh, on, on Long Pond Road. Right? Fanning, number seventeen, okay.
Fanning has the one that has that, that long mouth.
Yes.
Yeah, you walk in, okay, and, um, I told you that, that the, there's a grave for Francis Fanning spelled with an E. Erica wrote that. I'll have to check on that, but that means a woman if it's, you know, and I, I don't know, and that's nineteen twenty-four to twenty twelve. And then there is Aubrey. David Fanning, nineteen fifty-two to two, he died in two thousand, and Aubrey Fanning, nineteen twenty-three, died in two thousand nine. So David Stone is alone, Francis and Aubrey are on one stone, and there is a medallion there and a flat. Okay, that was never there before.
No. Uh, we're gonna.
Piece of that, right?
I don't know if it's a bit.
To one of our markers?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, well, well, I mean. That cemetery was abandoned for years. The, who kept, who maintains? Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, who was the adopter?
Right now, it's the Lions.
It's the Lions, yeah, they took over and, and, and have been maintaining it. We used to have a woman who thought it was really a neat idea to sell pots up there.
Yeah, she was not the sexton of the cemetery.
Not the sexton of.
Is there a sexton?
No, no, but no, they just, I, he, they've been adopted and, um, but she was, she was a piece of work. So all those people that are in relatively new graves.
Yeah, these three.
She sold for sixty dollars a piece, put it in her pocket and went home. So she, she knows who's part.
Alright, well, they're, they're.
And they are Fanning.
Yeah, they are Fanning.
They are Fanning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're, they're ashes too, but they're, they're not.
Yes, yeah, because they're coming in from, um.
I don't.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, no, Iowa.
Yeah, Iowa, Iowa, Iowa. They come in from Iowa, and they show up once a year and clean up that wall.
They, it, it, the, since we started going near the cemetery, it's been clean.
Uh huh.
There are, um, a tree fell down over the wall on the, on the east wall. No, on the west wall, a dead tree dropped over the wall, and on the east wall, a log of part of a tree is also over the wall. But the.
But they're not in the cemetery.
They're in the cemetery.
Oh.
Yeah.
They're in the cemetery against the wall.
Well, no, they fell over the wall, they're on the wall and.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yes, but they are not where the veterans graves are. The veterans' medallions, the, which are the antique ones, okay? Have been set, you remember the high seat can like that's.
Right.
Juice can or whatever, like, it's like they filled it with cement and put them in doubt in and.
Yes.
And they were planted in the ground, but they're not in the ground anymore. They're standing next to the graves.
Yeah.
So we, we left them.
So somebody was there.
Yeah, maybe for a while more, or I, I don't know, but they're, they're out.
So we could re-recept them, I just think.
If, if that's what you think should be done, I don't know, I'd like to know why. You don't wanna recept them and they pull them out, you know, we don't want to do that. Keep going there.
Another problem with that cemetery. Somebody.
You see it in the bathroom.
How do I say? Right at the entrance.
Oh, right, when the entrance is where the.
Yeah, but not, not in the cemetery, but on the wall.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't.
We never knew what, anytime we went up there, we never knew what we were gonna find.
We haven't found that, so we.
But, yeah, I, I, that, that problem, I think, went away.
Yeah.
We'd be good. And the Lions.
Yeah.
So they'll take care of those trees, I think, when they go in there, you know, they, they bring it apart and they'll take care of the trees.
And then the last one, um, was Nehemiah Smith.
Yeah.
And I, I, it is in the book. It doesn't have how to get there because it just has the geodetic survey plots, which I didn't know we had that, we looked for that, we just hiked through the woods. Erica and I hiked all over somebody's property. Ed and I hiked all over Al Clark, or the Clark family, whoever it is, who their property was. And then finally I convinced my husband to drive down this road in between that goes, is K to, and there's a telephone pole and a number eight six two. And you come down into a very well manicured place.
Yeah.
And I, my husband says, alright, now you can go and knock on the door if that's what you wanna do. Which I did, and it turned out, I think his name is Stephen Foltz, it's Mary Foltz's son and his wife, and, um.
They maintain.
They maintain the cemetery. Their property is what, part of their property was a Christmas tree farm. It's no longer Christmas, it's not a farm, it's just Christmas trees growing. And this is the best kept cemetery that I have seen. They say they, they mow the lawn through the Christmas tree, not lawn, they mow through the Christmas tree so you can walk through there on several different paths. And, and then they mow into the cemetery and the cemetery, they use a leaf blower and they blow the path clear. And then they say they do it two, three times a year, and when we were there, it was, it was just. Eight six two. Colonel Lego.
Mary, Carrie, Feeder. It's white. Sisters. The Falls. They took that Thomas May Cemetery. Long Pond, that's a big height.
You'd have to be a mountain.
Yeah.
To get to.
They took it up, but they do it together. Two couples. I mean, they go, they go with the Thomas May. And then, and they, the Thomas May, they drive it back from the dead, I mean, so to speak.
Did they do the.
I mean, it was, it was. Well, those are difficult because you can't drive right up, you know, you gotta quarter of a mile or more of a hike, and it's all uphill, so.
Take a car path, there's a car path, there was twenty-five years ago, a thousand feet up the hill, wall cemetery on your left, two hundred feet off the car path. Okay, do they do the flags up there?
There's no, I don't think there are any veterans.
No veterans.
There are no veterans, but, but they.
They're coming down the hill that and thinking.
The, the Feeders.
I don't know that name, I must have, I killed someone, you know.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so that's my cemetery. I think Christopher Avery and the main cemetery need care. And then I also went to the Holdridge Cemetery, you and I.
We both did it.
We both did it.
Good, great, it's super done. Yeah, that, that, that one, you're, all you need is a, um, weed whacker. Cut down all the stuff, and hi- his grave is in the middle, right in the middle of the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a tree over the west wall.
Well, we'll have to get it down. Okay.
Alright.
The only.
Oh.
Yeah.
Saying I, uh, when I found, but I, I have to talk about, somebody's maintaining the Bailey Cemetery, a lot of church go. Okay, and, uh, they put it as a development that went in there.
Yeah.
And, and now it's much easier to get to, because it's in, one of, number seven, their backyard.
Yeah.
And they, I assume, have been maintained. I mean, in the past, we always said, boy, this could use work, but I would do, you know, but I think, I, I have to check with them to see if in fact, and say thank you so, so, so much. It's, uh, and look. Just look, I couldn't even recognize.
Bailey says Thomas Mann and from the Hales, it's number Thomas Mann twenty-nine, Hales forty-five. Turn right at traffic light onto Lantern Hill, travel eight tenths of a mile to Homestead Road, is this the one you?
That's it.
Okay, three tenths of a mile, park path to cemetery is opposite twenty-nine Homestead. Park path, a thousand feet up the hill, wall cemetery on your left, that's the one you're talking about, that the two families are taking care of that. Okay, I thought you started to talk about another one.
Yeah, no, that, that's.
This is, well, the name of this.
The Faltzes and the Feeders. And I think the Feeders have the Faltzes with the one they have, Nehemiah.
Maybe, this one is, is in the book under Bailey. Bailey Cemetery.
It was nice to see, we haven't done anything. Page twenty-nine, I think. And it's, it's actually a lot bigger. Because one, well, it used to be, though, here, it was so overgrown, you can only see a few. But now, probably maybe a dozen stones in there.
The joint has three.
The Bailey Cemetery?
This, this one says, on the left side of Route seven one seventeen, private property, follow the stone wall three ninety-five.
And we gotta see now that, that, what used to be, um, just all woods and stuff is now, because of construction, is now houses.
This says, it goes south on Route one seventeen. The cemetery is in a field, one tenth of a mile off the road, on the left side of Route one seventeen, that's my side, our side, your side of Route one seventeen. Follow the stone wall, almost four hundred feet, cemetery is walled, and that's Noah Bailey's, Zipper Bailey and Esther Bailey. And it doesn't indicate that there's a vet in there. But you're right, we, I'll, I'll, like, see where this is. Nine, it's just almost a mile south from the congregational church. Point nine five, that committee man, they must have been walking it out with one of those wheels. But I don't see a vet in there. Is that not the place you're talking about then?
No, no, this is off the church, church, no.
Okay, not Bailey.
It's, it's about, I think it's, it's now off some Bailey Drive or Bailey Way, they named them. Danan Road, did these houses around half of the cemetery, I guess.
Is it Churchill, off of Churchill?
It's off Churchill.
Yeah, big cat.
It's over there.
Here.
Yeah.
And the, the old directions were.
There's only two graves in there.
You went in the backyard of a house that was on Churchill, then you walked a few hundred yards, kind of into the woods and off your right. Found.
Found, let's go north, then you go.
Now it's pretty much in somebody's back.
On Churchill Road, a half a mile from one seventeen.
Yeah.
You're right, just where this new development, the cemetery's on the left, park and go down the valley, pass the stone wall, private property, the graves are just over the wall to the north of the backyard.
Yeah, and those, those directions seem to be, okay, doesn't much better way.
As they keep putting stuff away.
We have corrections that were just done, were done like three years ago, that came with the cemetery.
Correction, yeah, and, and you know what, I could not find mine. I did have them, but I, if you're gonna reprint them, I would like to. Or give them to me and I'll take them to the library.
But this is about this. But this development is fairly new, so.
Jessica, do you have some staples or additional directions to cemeteries? No, okay.
Oh, my, I can find all mine, as long as you don't change them.
No, the idea, I usually throw in a, a new one.
You did for me.
Yeah.
And I can't find it.
I did for you.
I have another idea in town under my belt. I've been here for six months.
All right, so I'll be good, I'll be good.
People are like, yeah, just turn on this road.
Right. Well, that road isn't there anymore, but they're just.
Or they use, they'll interchange the highway names and the name names.
Cause the, the Foltz's road driveway, which is tarred and has a phone pole marked eight six two one, it already has a number. In the, in the book, it says, um, a dirt road.
Yeah. Like going to Holdridge, does it sit across, the driveway across from Paul, something, something, something. I'm like, Tom? I'm going slow.
Start reading numbers. That's how, that's how we found this one on Long Pond Road was by the phone number two.
Yeah.
The telephone, no, telephone pole number, yeah.
Yes.
Do we have more?
No. I think that, okay, so we've done, we can go on for the next. The next one, um, is new business, and we need to determine the best day of time to do repair work, whether we're committing. I mean, if, if everybody is, let's say, free out of weddies, that will be the day that you, if the weather is good, we're gonna be doing repairs, you know, repair of stones and, and so on and so forth.
What kind of work are you talking about?
Setting up.
Moving the boulders?
Yes.
No machinery. I, I think we need to go do some weed whacking.
I have a personal relationship with independence physical therapy.
Yeah, Main Town needs to be.
That may be.
Well, we, let's not, we don't have to list all of them. You and I can sit down and discuss that and list them. Um, the problem is the, the weather. We are, you know, so, you know, you might get an email at, on Monday that we're doing something on Thursday. If you can't make it, you can't make it, but, you know.
So who's gonna do the moving the boulders, like you?
No, 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 no. Will is gonna do that. He's so good at it.
Military. I'm military, I could do.
Yeah, so, and you have a full-time job.
Does he?
Oh, oh, and then.
And he.
Coaching, right? Yeah, but somewhere around, we coach one team or something.
You shouldn't say that.
For me, that's a vacation.
Oh, for, I'm going to nights for the next ten weeks, so I'll start work at eight o'clock at night.
Doesn't sound like you'll be available in the daytime for moving stones.
I mean, this is like a Saturday.
Most of it's weed whack.
Yeah, Saturdays are the news.
That possible?
Yeah.
You're good on a Saturday?
Yeah, I, I think that's probably. It's every morning, so, like I say, summertime. Actually, the other thing, well, these two look like they're strong and healthy and actually, actually.
You have age on your side. All right.
All right.
Okay.
We'll propose something and you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Send it out.
Yes, yeah.
See if it, see if it's good, you know.
But I, yeah, I just warned you that, you know, you might get a, a, a request that, you know, do some work, you can't, you can't do it, that you can't do it. And weather is a big, big issue.
It is.
I mean, I, I, humid is my enemy. All right, I need a, um, suggestion to reenter.
I'm looking to return.
Okay. John Faver?
Hi.
Hi.
Nobody opposed?
Nobody opposed? The next meeting, October eleventh.
Sorry, um, you gave it to us before, and I really have to.
Oh, yeah, you would give it to us before.
It's the same, it's same day, Tuesday, four o'clock, right?
Yeah. I'm not gonna go see that again. Okay. So, that's it? No, we're not, we're not changing times and stuff.
Jessica, the other ones are turning, the other ones, I'm turning.
Okay, so when we get outside, we get.
My new truck. And then I'm off to.
Tell me, did you ever, did you go to the parade, the memorial day parade, or did you talk to them?
No, I was not in the parade.
Was it?
I was supposed to go, but, uh, I had to write a paper at my homework, so I sent him, I said, new VFW.
That's, he likes talking to people more than I ever. What I wanna know is that I haven't heard from anybody what actually happened at the parade.
Oh.
It seems like it was fine.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't hear anything.
Were there, was there some crowd, some, like thirty people maybe, or?
Yeah, my husband said it was good, there was a lot of people there. They were tied up and prayed back.
Yeah, all right, that's one of the way I thought it would be, and I volunteered to help, and then I went to Kentucky instead for my granddaughter's graduation. But I raised seven hundred and fifty dollars in legend center for the books that they put out. Which amazed me, cause I'm not good at fundraising, but these people were.
Jessica, if you have someone that might be interested. If I'd be interested in.
Yeah.
Doing some maintenance of a cemetery. I was gonna say, if you could put the, if you could touch with me, I could maybe show them, you know.
Yeah.
The, the ones we, you know, have.
She wants your phone number.
Your phone number.
Call up one.
Do you need a phone?
No.
You wanna write it in?
I'm gonna do this.
But she wanted yours too.
Oh, you just want mine? All right, I'll give you my stuff.
Six, three, one, four, or something like that.
We were the only ones up. We're confirmed, we were the only ones up.
Oh.
It was very distracting. My ADD was not doing well.
Oh, yes, four, six, four.